Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarsky. Alderman E. Wesley.
Here.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Woods. Mayor Police.
Here. I declare a quorum present. Please stand and join us in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion to approve the city council minutes of August 20th, 2015.
To move.
Second.
Any questions or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do any citizens wish to be heard on matters not listed on the agenda? Okay. I have no written communicate this evening. Under mayor's report, chief? Chief's gonna make a presentation.
Thank you, mayor. If I could have our volunteer Frank Drogo step up along with Frank Kaminsky, who is the president of the Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police and the Park Ridge Police Chief. Those of you familiar with our department know we have pretty close relationships with members of our community. We have a particularly longstanding relationship with Mr. Drogo that goes back to, he's been in town for a very long time, but it goes back to 1997 when he went through our first citizen police academy. Since then, he showed a desire and a willingness to step up and be even a greater voice in the community and a bit greater contributor. So he's been a longtime volunteer with our department. And by volunteer, you know, not just a casual volunteer. We've totaled up his hours and he's contributed approaching 4,000 hours of community service just to the Wooddale Police Department. Just a little background of what he does for us is he assists us a lot in the investigations division with our property evidence, property management and control. You know, processing DUI videos for us, assisting us with packaging, storing some of our evidentiary items. Helps us with our prescription drug drop off. Just a pillar of the community and a great contributor to our department that allows us to focus that time on doing other things. We wanted to, we've wanted to recognize him for a while and we talked about a number of ways to do that and we thought an appropriate way, when we saw an award that the Illinois Chiefs submits request nominations for, we thought this was a perfect fit. So earlier this year, we did nominate him for the Illinois Chiefs Outstanding Citizen Award. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Chief Kaminsky to kind of talk about the award and why Frank was chosen.
Well, first of all, thanks for having me. And the first thing I'm trying to do is Frank, would you like to move to Park Ridge?
I actually look rather good to speak from it.
Oh, did you really? Oh, well, come on back. We could use a, use a citizen like you. As chief said, we do go through, we have request nominations for our annual awards programs where we recognize officers, citizens and organizations throughout the year. And we get a number of nominations and I think you should be very proud that one of your volunteers got this award. It's quite an achievement and we're certainly proud to be able to be here and to be able to recognize him for this award. You know, it's so important today in policing, you know, between the relationships between the police and the community. You hear a lot in the news, but there's so much more good stuff that goes on. And I hope the media here in town is present just to recognize that there are such good partnerships between citizens and the police. I think there's far more of those than there are the negative things that seem to come to the forefront. So we have, it's my honor and my privilege to be able to present to you, Frank, this award, this outstanding citizen award for 2015. And it's on behalf of the Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police. We proudly recognize you, Frank Drogo, for your exceptional civic commitment demonstrated through your enthusiastic volunteer efforts, including over 3,500 hours of volunteer time and many donations to the welfare of the Wooddale Police Department. You are the epitome of an outstanding citizen and truly deserving of this prestigious recognition for your significant contributions to law enforcement as a citizen of Illinois, presented by the Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police. Frank, congratulations to you.
Years ago when I was growing up, I had two friends whose fathers were police officers. And they were telling me about stories out there. Dad would come home after doing his job and sometimes they'd be a little down and depressed because the people they stopped were something calling them names, discussing, acting disgusted and stuff. And I could never understand it. I said, I said to myself, who's the guilty one here? The one that's calling the names is the guilty one, not, not the officer. And so...
It's all good, Frank.
So I'm, so when the citizen police academy started, I thought that's a terrific opportunity to show the police officers that everybody out there isn't an idiot. That there's a lot of people that are actually on their side, you know? And so this was one of my opportunities to do, do that. And, and, and so I joined and, and I liked it. They put me in records for, records for, for a while and, and I liked that too. I, I hope I did the right thing a lot, a lot of times. And, and I think I did, maybe once or twice. But now, I wouldn't be doing this if I, if I didn't think a lot about our police officers and all their backup people and records and dispatch and all the other people that back them up. There's such a terrific group of people. I'm very fussy with who I help. I just don't spend a lot of my time helping people that I feel, I feel are not worthwhile. But we got a great police department. Every, every guy is, every guy in Galloway is really terrific. And, and I really appreciate that. I just wish I could do more. I'm getting older now and I can't do as much as I used to. But I want you to know that you, you've got my heart and, and every ability that I have that's, that I can offer you, I'm willing to do it. Okay? Thank you.
Next up, next up, I'd like to introduce. I would like to introduce Megan Jobe. She's this year's Miss Pre-Teen Illinois for her age group. She won. She lives right here in Wooddale and she, we'd like to congratulate her, number one for being Miss Pre-Teen. I heard there was 98 contestants. She's number one in her age group. There was five age groups, correct? Am I stealing your thunder? I don't want, you know, I'll let her speak. Probably be better off.
Hello. My name is Megan Jobe. I am your reigning National American Miss Illinois Pre-Teen and I am so honored to be in front of you all this evening. National American Miss is an organization designated to boosting girls' confidence levels. NAM has three main competitions: formal wear, personal introduction, where you have to give a speech about yourself, and interview, where you go one-on-one with six to eight judges with a different unknown question at each. NAM also encourages royalty to volunteer as much as possible and I have been volunteering a lot at Feed My Starving Children. Through National American Miss, I have gained many skills such as confidence and eloquence. I have also made some great friendships. Once again, I am your National American Miss Illinois Pre-Teen, Megan Jobe. Thank you.
I've got a couple other announcements. Just to let people know, citywide garage sale Friday, September 11th through September 13th. The Shape of Wooddale Town Hall meeting will be Wednesday, October 21st at 7:00 PM at the Wooddale Junior High Performing Arts Auditorium. Just an update, Wooddale Road closing north of Irving Park, right at Wooddale and Irving Park, by the tracks over there, starting Tuesday, September 15th through Monday, October 5th. Wooddale Road will be closed, northbound and southbound. That's just north of Irving Park Road, by the tracks. And again, this weekend, being a holiday weekend, Garage, Garage, Garbage Pickup will be pushed back a day. Everybody on Monday will be Tuesday, Tuesdays will be Wednesday. And have a safe Labor Day weekend. And anything for the management report, chief?
No report.
Thank you. No consent agenda. Committee chairman reports. Alderman Catalano, planning and zoning.
No report, mayor.
Thank you. Public health and safety, Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Oh, no report, mayor.
Thank you. Public works, Alderman Messina.
I have five things.
Okay.
First thing is I'd like to make a motion to approve partial payment request number one to Martin Construction, Inc. for the War II Phase II road project in an amount not to exceed $493,509.65.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Tony? Okay. Any questions? Alderman Roy Wesley.
In our contract with Martin, is, are they supposed to wash down the road for the gravel to keep the dust down? We've been having a problem over there with that.
Mr. York.
Yes, in the contract, it says that they need to provide dust control when needed. We have reaffirmed to them that it's needed and that they need to continue to stay on top of it and they have a pledge to do so.
Do you have a follow-up?
No.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Okay. Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman, Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky. Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman, Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
And that passes.
Next, I'd like to make a motion to approve a partial payment request number 20 to Williams Brothers Construction for the North Wastewater Treatment Plant Upgrades Phase 1B in an amount not to exceed $359,457.91.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
And that passes.
Approval of partial payment request number 21 to Williams Brothers Construction for the North Wastewater Treatment Plan Upgrades Phase 1B in an amount not to exceed $903,976.31. That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
And that passes.
Great. Approval of change order number seven with Williams Brothers Construction, Inc. for the North Wastewater Treatment Plant Project in an extension of 30 calendar days. That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Mayor, my question is why is this coming right to council? And we didn't discuss in committee.
Mr. York.
Yes, basically it's coming directly to council because their extent, their timeline was supposed to be completed on the 31st of August. If I would've waited until the September 10th to come to committee and then not be approved by council until the first week of October, then basically this whole time period, they would've had to stop work and not been able to complete the project. So it's basically a timing situation.
Go ahead, follow-up, yes.
I've got a couple of questions here. There, so when did we receive the letter? From the time that they were posted, when their date was?
Do you remember that?
I believe I received it on the 24th.
24th.
And it was explained when?
The 31st. I have to check the dates of the letter to make sure, but I believe it was right around the 24th.
So they didn't give us that much of a notice?
A week, maybe.
A week?
At most.
A, a week. But I'm just saying, most contractors know they're running behind waiting in the van. So now we're playing the show here. The other question on that is that their extension is caused because the landscaping, correct?
Mr. York.
Yes, that's one of the reasons. Basically it's to, because they had held off on doing some of the landscaping as we made our decisions. And they could have finished the asphalt work and did the landscaping later, but we wanted them to do all the landscaping work and then come in and finish the last lift of the asphalt so their skid steers and stuff doesn't mess up our final layer of asphalt. So they're doing some of the hardscape stuff at the end that they, that they would've normally done earlier.
Sure, go ahead.
The other question is, it's because landscaping, I noticed the asphalt still ain't completion done. It looks like they just put a binder on it and put the final lift, but also on the opposite side. And the other thing is, where's the gates? When's the gates coming in? Is, is, is the, is extension because they don't have the gates either?
Mr. York.
No, there was some other work that was done in change order number six, when we talked about the knee walls and some of the other things that got changed. That work didn't get started until after change order number six, which pushed everything back a couple of weeks. So all the gates and stuff will all be completed, everything will be done, put to bed by the 30th of September with this change order.
Right. Because the reason why I ask, this is now the second change order on this project. And to get it seven days per the deadline.
You mean second extension.
Right.
But some of it is because of us.
Right. I understand, but get it seven days prior to the deadline. I, I just don't see why they couldn't do it.
Right, and I don't think we had a meeting that week either, right?
But they could've sent us the letter.
Alderman Roy Wesley had a follow-up question?
Yeah, it just doesn't make sense that they send on the 24th. We have a project manager, we got H.R. Green, no one sees that they're running behind and only give a week's notice here. I mean, there doesn't...
Question for the engineer, Mr. York.
Well, yeah, I mean, our engineer is there to watch out for our, our well-being. It's not to tell Williams Brothers, hey, you're gonna be late. When we got around the 15th of the month and we were saying, hey, are you guys gonna be able to get done? By the time it took them to process paperwork on their side, we did reach out to them and say, hey, you need to get this done. But we can't do anything, and H.R. Green can't do anything until Williams Brothers makes that first step to say that...
Do you have a follow-up? Go ahead.
Don't they have a project manager on this?
Does, does Williams Brothers have a, yes. Williams Brothers has a project manager. That's the gentleman that wrote us the letter on the 24th.
It just, okay. I'm fine with this one, but if next one comes and it comes a week late, a week before, I'm gonna have a problem with it since they have a project manager there. Evidently, someone's not doing their job there.
All right. Any other questions? Alderman Messina.
Can I ask what the implications are for being light, for, for the city? So what does that mean for us?
Mr. York.
Nothing's, I mean, there's no issue with us. I mean, right now, the plan is substantially complete. That means all the process works. So everything that they did process-wise works and that met, that met the original completion date. So there's no extension on the process part of it. This is the beautification part of it. This is the, the roadways. Yeah, does it hamper our, our objectives? A little bit because our guys have to park in different spots and stuff. But overall, it's not that big of a, big of it to do for us. And then the landscaping. So basically, it's the asphalt and the landscaping. And the asphalt was being put down today. So once that binder gets put in, we can, we can properly utilize that area as well. So implications for us are minimal.
Real quick, I've asked Mr. Bond to give you a little on how liquidated damages would work. I mean, as far as a project when it's delayed.
Yeah, what we've got, we have in our contracts a provision for liquidated damages. We've exercised that in, in other contracts with the treatment plant and that's there for the protection of the city. So as you suggested, what are the implications? If there are in fact implications, had this been something other than the asphalt and the landscaping where, you know, we're not up and operational and we've got to transition from one facility to another, then liquidated damages would, would kick in. And the reason for their extension is to give them, because once it's, once it's complete, that is the, sort of the timeline that starts liquidated damages. So they're asking for an extension to get these items that obviously they weren't able to get in the timeline in the, in the contract. And it also will preclude the city going forward with liquidated, liquidated damages. And the reality of it is, given the nature of the completion, what's been done and the fact that it's not hampering, it would be unlikely we could recover liquidated damages anyway, even though they're beyond that, technically beyond the August 31st deadline. But we generally have those in there. So if we can't use the facility or the road or whatever it is that they're working on, we, we, it's one, it's an incentive to a contractor to, you know, keep moving along and recognizing that, that's a deadline. And secondly, it protects the, the city by essentially penalizing, and the courts say liquidated damages are not a penalty, but essentially penalizes the, the contractor who doesn't satisfy the terms of the contract, which is the, the completion date.
Any other? Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Where's, what's the status on a punch list on this project? How many items are on a punch list since we haven't had it?
Mr. York.
I do not have the exact number off the top of my head, but I know punch lists have been going on. And I will be, I'll check on that tomorrow for you, get you, try to get you a list.
Aye.
Or a number at least.
Go ahead, you follow-up.
Yeah, and then the other thing is, since this was a state funding with the state of Springfield there, do we have to notify them that we gave them another three-day extension or no for that loan?
Well, actually, I'll, I'll respond to that. Mr. Wilson's already received the letter. We had to sign. We have started, I don't know if we made the first payment yet, Mr. Wilson, yes, no? Because we gave them a due date, so it kicks in for what we already borrowed. Any future payments then will get added to this. Mr. Wilson, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Correct. We have received notice from the APA that the loan repayment timetable has began. As Mr. York pointed out, substantial completion for the facilities, the main components of it, were, that deadline was met. So the first payment back to the state is due in December. And while all the payments, pay requests have not been put in, they base the current principal and interest repayment schedule based upon what was turned in as of the date of substantial completion for the facilities. Any subsequent pay requests will be added to that amount and the repayment schedule will be updated accordingly each subsequent event as the project comes to the final completion.
You have a follow-up?
So, so what you're saying is if, if you started off with the first payment due December. Is that what it hurt?
Correct.
So you made a comment as the payments have started.
The, well, the timeline, it's six months after completion. The timeline has started. I knew something has started. I wasn't sure if the first payment was made yet or not, then it's not.
I thought the, I just want to verify. I thought the agreement with the state is we are, we have one year when it's fully operated to start the payment.
I believe it's six months. Mr. Wilson.
They, they have the contract today.
Mr. Wilson.
It was six months post-completion.
Completion?
Correct. And the facilities, they're, they're not specifically counting landscaping as, even though it's part of the, part of the loan, they're not treating that as part of the, the facility for the timing mechanism. They also informed me that they had a number of instances where the landscaping took a couple of years and projects were never finalized out. So they've determined that once the, once the facility, the main core of the project is fully operational, that that's when they're triggering that completion date from not specifically the, the aesthetics portion of the project.
So...
Go ahead, follow-up.
Just want to make sure, man. So completion date, completion date is now what?
Mr. York, you're, you're talking about that landscaping now or the treatment?
No, I'm, I'm talking treatment plant. What is completion date of a treatment plant?
Final completion date is, is September 30th.
All right.
Go ahead.
False. Substantial completion date, that's the date that triggers the, the money, the money wheel starting to move.
The what?
The substantial completion date was, I believe, August 15th.
When the plant is operational.
Yes, that's when the plant is operational.
Okay, so from August 15th, we actually don't have to give the state a check till six months. That, that, that is what I'm hearing here.
No, it's from the date of substantial completion. There's two, two timelines in the contract. One of them is substantial completion because they recognize, and every contract has it, every single one. We had this with our, the other treatment plant. Every contract has a substantial completion date and a final completion date. Substantial completion legally says that it is completed to the point where it, it is able to do the function that you contracted for. So it's up landscaping, repairing asphalt and doing those types of things, punch list items. Those are not substantial completion. Under the terms of the loan, and this is, this is generally the case, when you hit substantial completion... completion, that starts the clock running. So the loan triggers six months after the substantial completion.
Okay, so what I'm saying here then, if substantial completion was August 15th, unless I'm not understanding this, which I just heard, August 15th was substantial completion, am I right?
I'm pretty sure that's the date, I can check to make sure.
So what I'm trying to say here is...
Should be January or...
It should be January, we should be giving the state a check then, not now. We, the first check for payment...
There's one other thing that I think we're missing. I think we gave them a date when we filled out the paperwork. I remember you saying something to me, Brett, and they wanted to start right away, there was a...
Correct, the date in the paperwork was the middle of June was the initial substantial completion. I believe the one change order that was passed a few months ago was for the facilities portion of it. The state is in receipt of all those change orders, and in talking through with them, and then I'll said, I should need Dixon to review the document. Everything that the IPA has sent to us, they said they had the change order, but again, reviewing all the pay requests and whatnot, they stuck to that June date for the completion date.
That's the difference.
Yeah, so, I mean, we've been through this probably three or four times between myself, Ms. Dixon, and the state, and they've stuck pretty hard to that June date.
All right, so let me make sure I get this, because I'm, I'm, there's so many dates being thrown out here now because, so the paperwork that we submitted, which I, was completion, substantial completion was June, right?
Mr. York.
That was the original substantial completion, should've been done in June.
Okay.
So it sounds like that's what EPA was using as their starting point.
June.
So, June, December would be six months.
So technically, we should not have to make a payment till December 1st.
That's what he's saying.
But you're saying it here, read.
No, no, I...
No, the first payment's, I think, December 16th or 17th.
I said, I'm not sure if we made a payment or one is coming up. I wasn't exactly sure on the dates, we'd never...
So our first payment will be...
Go ahead.
Our first payment, you think, will be December 16th?
It's on my desk, I can verify the actual date, but it's middle of December.
It's in December.
So what I...
Go ahead.
What I would ask that, you know, I would ask that we bring an update on this, on what our payments are gonna be in...
What the payment schedule is, well, we can get you a copy.
Right, the payment schedule, the other thing is...
The problem is with the payment schedule, being that we haven't, we don't have all the money yet, it's gonna change.
Yeah, but tell me how much it's gonna cost my first payment in December.
Well, I'm sure he can tell you that. Chief.
I was just gonna say, we can include that in the manager's report, what we have at this point, so...
You know what, I would not like any manager's report, I would like it...
You want it separate?
Separate, please.
Okay. Another, Alderman Messina, go ahead.
So, yeah, I do agree, I do want to see a payment schedule. My concern, maybe you can speak to this, so we have a substantial completion date, and if something happens, let's say they drag their feet and they don't finish the landscaping, at no point past that substantial completion date, we cannot get any damages, we would have to pay.
That's incorrect.
Final completion is now September, if you pass this tonight, this change order, final completion date is September 30th.
Yeah, that's what happened, right.
October 1st, Attorney Dixon, Attorney Bond can to explain, but that's when we start the liquidated damage clock starts.
Mr. Bond.
Yeah, there's two, the contracts generally have two provisions. One has a certain dollar amount if you don't reach the substantial completion threshold, and then there's another liquidated damage clause, it's generally less, and in this one it is, it's less when you get to the final completion. It's kind of, final completion might be, you know, you're talking about landscaping and the project finishes in December, well, you're not gonna put sod, nor do you want to put sod, so it has a lower threshold. But there's two components for the liquidated damages, one substantial, if that's not met, the second one is final completion.
You have a follow-up?
So there is a potential for us to file, if this drags into winter and we can't lay sod, then there is potential, if it made sense.
Mr. Bond.
Correct.
But they should be done September 30th.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we're good to go. Any other, go ahead, Alderman Messina?
No, last one.
Anyone else? Okay, we got a motion, a second, need a roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
That passes.
Finally, a resolution seeking to approve an intergovernmental agreement with DuPage County for the Elizabeth Court Pond Grant Award in an amount not to exceed $36,340. That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
And that passes. And that concludes your report.
Yes, that's my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Finance Administration, Alderman Peter Jake.
I have two items today. Item number one, approval of a not-to-exceed amount of $5,000 for costs associated with the 2016 Wooddale Charity Gala, that is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? Alderman Roy Wesley.
General fund or hotel, tourism?
Tourism.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
I mean, I have no problem doing this, I just have two questions. One...
What did we use last year?
What we used last year?
It was, I believe, $1,000 in man-hours and postage and handling.
Okay, so the $5,000 is going for what this time?
Well, no, no, no. We, when me and, I told the finance director to put it on the agenda, I go, I don't remember, I think it was $2,500 we did last year, could've been $5,000, I don't remember. I go, what's the difference? We only used, I know we didn't use that much, and that's why I think finance director had that in the packet, was $1,000, I think I saw it correctly.
And it, and it's, that is, the money's gonna be used for that. The problem is, and I, I'm, let me ask the attorney this question, is technically, could you take tourism fund money and put it into something like this, knowing that we are not promoting, I don't consider this really promoting tourism in the town, but could we legally take that money out of tourism fund and be funded for it? I have no problem for this program, I just want to make sure we legally, because I thought the point is, this is for nonprofit organizations, that we were supposed to get our money back once we put money into this.
And I can tell you for, I can tell you for, no, 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 we weren't getting our contribution of postage and handling, we weren't getting money back.
We put the down payment on, Paul.
Well, see, this year, last year, the $500 we did.
Okay.
We, that was the first year, this year, they've done it. The band, they've done it. It's all done by the organization.
You know what, I'm for it, I just want to make sure we're doing it legally.
Mr. Bond, any other questions?
Yeah, legally you can, as long as you're advancing the interests of the community and in this, under this particular event, you certainly are. And I do disagree with you respectfully, that I think it will promote, you know, people come into town and come into those events, so, but it is a legally riskable expense.
We could go back to the $2,500 we did last year, by either way.
If the motion's on a four or five grand, that's fine.
Alderman Messina?
I have no problem.
I feel like we're the Three Stooges, the three of us constantly talking, but, you know, I'm part of this group, right, and so it's important to me, but when we do the $5,000, is it coming through as a grant, as a donation, or, because my concern is, would we be held as a host, like the city is hosting this if God forbid something were to happen at the event? So how are we submitting this payment?
Mr. Bond.
Yeah, no, you're making that payment, again, it's a not-to-exceed number, but the city is, does not incur any liability as a result of making a contribution toward the event.
So would be, it would be a donation?
Correct.
Well...
We are paying expenses.
We're not donating the $5,000, we're donating some staff time, some postage, and whatever that cost may be, last year was about $1,000, it's probably gonna be about the same, might even be less this year.
And the reason you're putting that amount in is otherwise, if it does, you see, let's just say you say $500 and it's $506, you'd have to come back to the council for authorization. This gives the ability to defer those expenses without coming back to the council, recognizing the council said this is the threshold, this is the maximum we're willing to allocate for this particular event.
Alderman Messina.
But by doing that, that doesn't signify that we're hosting the event, right?
Mr. Bond.
That is correct.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Now you just brought up another question here.
Uh-oh.
If something happens or an organizations are involved with it, and there's a lawsuit, who's it come back to?
Mr. Bond.
Well, the city has no liability, I can't say that somebody wouldn't try and bring the city into it, but the city would have absolutely under, by law, have no liability for it. You know, if something happened at the venue, the venue would be held responsible depending on, you know, was it something they failed to, you know, clear an obstruction or whatever the case may be, so. And every one of the entities along the way is going to have insurance, and as you know, you've got the tort immunity gives protection to the city, but it's not going to be a city function or city event, so, you know, you're not gonna have that exposure.
Go ahead, you follow-up, Wesley.
Yeah, in return of that, we're supplying staff time and stuff like that, is it our responsibility to make sure they have insurance, is their organization?
Mr. Bond.
I mean, who's others running organization, is it their responsibility to check to make sure everyone has insurance?
Well, it certainly would be prudent for them to do it, but we're not under any obligation to ensure that the case, I mean, there's gonna be premise liability insurance for, you know, the facility where it's being hosted. The fact that we're making a donation towards certain expenses and staffing for that, our people are covered because they're gonna be doing this as part of their, as part of their jobs, so they're covered under the city insurance.
Okay, again, again, if a committee is made up of, I don't know who the committee actually is...
Of the organizations, there's one or two members from each organization. And actually, I can tell you, at their next meeting, they're talking about the committee formally becoming a 501(c)(3) itself, the committee itself becoming a 501(c)(3). They have, one of the committee members is an attorney, and he's, they're working on that.
Okay, I'm, okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
No.
Okay. Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Okay, second item, a resolution authorizing the city of Wooddale to enter into a purchase and sale agreement for the purchase of property commonly known as 372 North Wooddale Road, Wooddale, Illinois, permanent index number 03-09-413-044. That is my motion.
Do I have a second? Motion and second, questions? Alderman Catalano?
Thank you.
Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino? Did I hear you?
No, you didn't, I haven't answered yet. Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
That passes.
That is the end of my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Under other business, the Wooddale Noise Group?
No report.
And Stormwater?
No report.
Okay. Approval listed bill, September 3rd, Alderman Jacob.
Make a motion for the approval of listed bills for September 3rd, 2015, for $2,105,182.86.
That's your motion?
That's my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions on the bills, Alderman Roy Wesley?
Okay, I have a couple of questions. Page, sorry.
Sorry, go ahead, no problem.
Page 10, Landzys Hardware, probably for Matt, weed killer, 4318. These are minor stuff, but you know, these, I know we buy weed killer in two and a half gallons, I'm sure.
This was purchased by the Utilities Division, so I'd have to see what they were purchasing it for.
I really, I really don't care if it's purchased by Utilities, I don't care that it's purchased by Public Works. We buy two and a half gallons, and this is the problem that we have when we have so many other departments buying things. Public Works, I know they have two and a half gallon of weed killer down, around there. Now you have another department in the same city buying weed killer at 4318, and I'm sure it's a little battle at that cost.
Mr. York.
I agree with you, and that's something that we're trying to tighten up within our multiple depart, our divisions within the department in multiple locations, so we'll look into that.
I'm sure we're gonna have a discussion about that very soon with these new programs that's coming up.
That's a perfect...
And we have, I take it, the spray one is a little pump gallon sprayer? They don't have no grass around there anymore.
That was purchased out of the Streets Division, I'd have to take a look to see exactly what that was for.
Okay.
But having the bills in front of me, I can't give you an answer for that.
I have another one, Russo's Power Equipment, give me a moment. Crankshaft and Gasket, 8851, if anyone wants to follow on this, it's page 14.
What'd you say, crankshaft?
It's crankshaft and gasket.
Okay.
What's this for?
Mr. York.
I would have to look at the bill to exactly tell you what piece of equipment this was for, I can let you know that.
Okay, a matter of fact, I'd like to know everything that was purchased at the Russo's Power Equipment, because if this is a crankshaft for one of those new mowers, I'm gonna have a major problem with it, especially some of the things already on here, I see that are probably for the new, for one of the new mowers, that probably should've never broke. It's probably because they're jumping over curbs, I'm not saying they are, but I'm sure they, I've seen it done, so. And Euler, thank you, Matt.
Go ahead.
Page 17, Euler Consulting, for $14,454.10, this for the clock tower? Where are we with this clock tower? How much does it cost, and what, what's going on with it?
Mr. Cage.
And are we gonna bring this for a final vote at this council?
Go ahead, Mr. Cage.
Absolutely. The bill you have in front of you, right now, we have an approved contract with Euler for not to exceed amount of $64,000 to date, including the bill before you of, I think it's 14, 45410, they're currently at approximately $22,000. So, right now, we're working on looking into and obtaining the federal dollars that we've discussed previously. This obviously will come back to a committee at a later date when we, it's right now, working through that contract, it has to go through IDOP to obtain those federal dollars, there's obviously a lot of requirements for the federal money, so we're working on that right now.
Go ahead, follow-up.
Okay, $22,000, we're into this contract?
Yes, that's correct.
Do we have an estimate, a hard estimate of how much this thing is gonna cost? Do we have an estimate, a hard estimate of how much this thing is gonna cost? I mean, wh, my question is, where are we on the project here? Are we, you're saying halfway with money, but what's that mean? Are we half, do they do it? I know they did a little drawing. What-
Yeah, we're-
Go ahead, Mr. Cage.
The contract's probably fifty pages, and I'm not gonna understand it.
Well, the, Euler has delivered, um, in that timeline, they've delivered, um, they've delivered and exceeded the forty percent. I would estimate the next deliverable is at eighty percent. I would estimate they're probably at somewhere in between, you know, sixty percent.
You have a follow-up?
Um-
Of, of their portion of the project?
Of the drawing.
Well, the, the drawings are done, um, for the, the design of the clock tower with the structural drawings. Those are completed. Um, so really, what the, you know, what the issue is right now, and I, I know you guys and myself included, see all the work that's going on at the intersection right now. Obviously, uh, the key aspect, uh, one of the key aspects to this project is the location of the clock tower. You know, obviously, with additional turn lanes going on to Irving Park Road, uh, lots of utilities, lots of work going in that area. That's a key element of this. So, location, uh, they have had, they've done a soils analysis. Um, so, yeah, I would ex, I would estimate that Euler is about sixty percent of the project done.
Go, you have a follow-up on that?
That's exactly what I'm saying. This council has not finalized the final vote of this clock tower, of how much this is gonna cost or anything yet. So, I guess I'm gonna have to sit down with you and find out actually where we are with Euler, so I understand it better, and saying, okay, we have a drawing. What's the next step? Is it, are the, is it pre-construction? Is it, I don't know how far they're going.
Once we get to this phase, after this phase would be construction phase, correct, Mr. Cage?
Right now, it's, you know-
Providing, you know-
Design elements.
Right.
And, and the key, the key portion to this part of the design is, um, making an application and qualifying for that, those federal dollars. Now, this item will definitely come back for review, because this is just the design stage. We, we've got an amount not to exceed sixty-four thousand. There's no way we're gonna exceed that amount with the consultants. Um, but we will bring it back, and it will be discussed at the committee whether the committee and the council wants to move forward in terms of using, you know, applying for and using the federal dollars and going forward with the project or not.
In return, you're, how am I understanding this right now? These federal dollars are not secured one hundred percent yet?
Exactly, that's correct.
So how much percentage is secured? Anything?
Right now, we met with, um, we met with IDOT, um, two weeks ago. So there's a process to obtaining those funds. What we're doing is initiating that. We will bring it back, and if, if the decision from, uh, the council is not to move forward, we won't move forward. If the decision is to move forward, uh, I think what we're gonna be presenting is a not-to-exceed, you know, amount for construction of the tower, and what the actual dollars mean in terms of, uh, the federal dollars and what percentage the city would be liable for.
Then I have a legal, legal question to, Mr. Bond. Since, since we, since we don't have this federal money secured, and we, for some reason, if this, if the money does not come through, I mean, this is my problem of saying, okay, with Euler, how far are we, could we stop Euler right at a certain point and say, hey, we're not gonna go on with it because we don't have the federal money or anything else, or we don't have a dollar amount of this project of how much this actually is gonna cost?
Mr. Bond.
Well, there is a provision that allows you to terminate it and just pay for the services that are rendered up to that point. The, the council approved the, uh, the Euler to go forward with the design, and they approved that contract, because you need, it's a sort of a chicken and an egg, because you need to have the, the design in order to know what the, you know, what you're gonna, and from that design, you're gonna select that project, and then you're gonna get bids on what the construction of that design is going to be. So this is a critical component to have at the very outset of the, uh, the project, and, you know, working, and if you don't get the federal dollars, uh, then you have to make a determination, do you wanna go forward with the construction of it? But you have to have an idea of what it's gonna be, what, what's gonna be, you know, from a design standpoint, so you know what the pot, potential cost could be, and you, as a council, can assess, do you wanna go forward if it's all on the, the city's dime, or if it's being split fifty-fifty or whatever the, the federal sharing might be. But, uh-
Go ahead.
That's my point already. We're doing the construction around it already, saying that we are gonna build this, kind of, because they're doing, they're moving the road and corresponding it with this. Am I understanding that right?
Well, the Rose Project is, um, is underway, as we can all testify in terms of what's going on out there. Um, the road project's underway. Now, the location of the clock tower clearly is impacted by what's going on with the road. It's not tied to that project, um, but because we're dealing with federal funds, we have to go through a certain process with IDOT. So, right now, all the city is involved in, and I, I know that's easy for me to say, is with the agreement, September fourth, two thousand and fourteen, with Euler, to develop these plans, um, with a not-to-exceed sixty-four thousand dollars. If the city, you know, when we talk about the city council, the city council's decision is not to move forward with it, we don't move forward with it. So, there's a lot of moving parts to it, and a big chunk of this is the federal dollars, because that's a substantial portion of what, uh, the proposed clock tower would cost. Um, if we're not successful obtaining that, um, my guess is that the project will go away. That's just my personal opinion. Um, but right now, what we're, what we're into the middle of is a contract with the architects to design it, and they have the preliminary plans. I'm expecting the eighty percent completion of their portion, um, in the next, um, actually, I think I requested it by October fifteenth from Euler, and that'll be eighty percent.
Okay, I guess I'll talk to you later about what I get for eighty percent.
Sure. And as far as the clock tower, they can't, even if we passed it, being that they have all the temporary poles and everything on the construction over there, they couldn't even build it right now.
Right, and we wouldn't want to. There's, there's a lot of moving parts in that area, which is, you know, quite frankly, it complicates the project that we're, in terms of design. Really, the key is location. I know you've all seen the location of that, um, the small park adjacent to Irving Park. There's a lot of things going on, from commed poles to road construction to other improvements we have there. So I think that what complicates the issue.
Right, and the other thing that's not mentioned, I mean, the grant money, if we don't receive that grant money, unfortunately, we came, what was it, two-point-four million, million dollars over budget on the safety improvement, which kinda put a, took a chunk into our, our budget. That's why the grant money is critical now.
Absolutely.
You have a follow-up? Otherwise, I'm gonna go there and say. You good?
[laughing]
Alderman Messina.
I just wanna get my facts straight here, because there's a lot of things. So, September two thousand and fourteen, we pay Euler sixty-four thousand.
Not-to-exceed amount, we have an agreement with Euler for not to exceed sixty-four thousand.
So that's a year ago, right?
Correct.
And now they have completed the design and the structural drawings, and they're sixty percent of the project.
My estimation, about sixty percent.
At what point, and maybe I missed this part, but what point can we qualify for the federal grant when they're one hundred percent?
Uh, actually, after our meeting with IDOT, I think eighty percent of the work with Euler gets us to the point where we can make that application for federal dollars.
You have a follow-up? Go ahead.
Sorry. I was under the impression there was a deadline, and there was this big rush to file this. Was there no deadline with, for the federal grant money?
There is a deadline, and we will meet it. Yes, it's upcoming.
Go ahead, follow-up.
Could we get that, that, what's the deadline?
Mr. Cage.
Well, this, yeah, there's, there's a number of parts to it. The deadline for Euler to get us to the eighty percent is October fifteenth. We have a follow-up meeting with IDOT after that date, and I think what they're looking to do in terms of their projects and their process, which I'll be quite candid, is, is very new to me, um, they're looking to let this project in January of twenty sixteen. So, we're ahead of the deadline, absolutely, in terms of submitting it to IDOT for the federal money. It's, just to sum it up real brief, I went to a meeting, uh, with IDOT and our consultants, uh, a very lengthy meeting, probably about two hours. There's a lot of hoops to jump through to qualify for that federal money, and this is a little different, this project, because it's a clock tower. It's not a roadway improvement, so it's a little out of the ordinary for IDOT, which is why we were there for two hours. Um, but I think they're looking at it in a certain way, and there's certain requirements you have to meet to apply for and receive federal grant money. So, it's, it's a challenging process, but we are certainly on schedule to meet those deadlines, and we will.
Any other questions? Any other bills? Any other questions on any other bills? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?[1778.62]